I call to order this meeting in the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, in the boardroom of the Administration Building 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, and me, Casey Phelan. I'm assuming Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Davila will be along shortly. Board members absent, it's Vicky Morgan. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I'll be giving the invocation, and the pledges will be given by Mr. Kendrick. Y'all pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you with hearts filled with gratitude for the boundless love, guidance, and influence of Christ in our lives. We thank you for the unwavering support and protection against negative forces working against your people. We lift up each board member and our incredible superintendent, expressing our special thanks and admiration for their dedication. May your continued support and influence be with them as they lead with wisdom and compassion. We humbly ask you for guidance and protection over our local, state, and federal government leaders. May they be instruments of justice, peace, and compassion in their service to the people. Forgive us, O Lord, where we fall short, and grant us the strength to walk in your ways. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state under God, one indivisible.
Let the record reflect. Ms. Gonzalez is now here as well. Public comments according to policy BED local related to items on the open session portion of the agenda. Speaker tonight is Mr. Christian Brandon, I'm sorry. I know I messed that up. And the topic is over Operations Agenda Item Number One. This portion of the public comments is limited to speakers who are addressing items listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual, students, and/or employees should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and, in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of this agenda. Titles may be used instead. This admonishment goes for positive and negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Fernandez, will you keep time for me, please, sir? And Mr. Fran will keep time and will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. You may, you, yes, sir.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Christian Franzen, former Air Force, former educator at Pasadena ISD. Some of you may recognize me. Got to work closely with a lot of you in this room. Some of you may know me as the guy who cleaned up the Fred Roberts fire. Some of you may know me as Mr. Franzen from Tegler Career Center. And I care about this district. I went to Stutch Berry Elementary when I was a kid. And I've served this district as a teacher, and I loved every minute of it. I'm here today because I made a mistake, and I failed you because you asked the company that I work for, Diversified Roofing, to provide you the best possible roofing project and company to do that work for you. Because of our relationships with the top manufacturers of roofing material in America, there's four, because of our relationships, we went out to them, and we got the best price on the top performing roofing system out there. We won the pricing section of the bid that I'm referring to on the agenda item. I don't, I can't see it in front of me. Now, your team, your great team in construction and planning is recommending that you take their recommendation for Trumbull Construction at a certain amount of dollars. Now, our dollars are less than their bid, and the materials that we're providing as part of our project are the top in the industry. The only way that our competitors got close to our price is because they use cheap materials. All I can express to you today is that I care. The reason why I'm up here is I care. We are number seven in the nation as a roofing contractor. We've done over $200 million worth of roofing in 2023. I've personally worked with over 16 schools in the past year. The team that I work for has done over 50 schools in the past year and all over America. And there is no way that we don't meet the requirements and the qualifications of our competitors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints of charges against a public officer or employee unless the individual who is the subject of the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel, and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer, and/or consideration legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. 551.074, for the purpose of considering matters related to the superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's contract, and related actions. We will reconvene at 7:00, 7:30?
As close as possible.
As close as possible to 7:00, yes. Board is going to reconvene into open session at 7:19 PM. Is that what you need?
That's what I needed.
And we're going to start it off with special recognition.
Well, the board members, as you may or may not know, January is School Board Recognition Month, and of course, PISD wants to celebrate in a big way with our trustees for your dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to our children of this community. The theme this year, as you can see up on the screens, is School Board Recognition Month is Locally Elected, Community Connected, which highlights the partnership between our elected trustees and the community. We are blessed, truly, in this district to have seven board members that serve the needs of our students and their families. Our engaged Board of Trustees has earned a reputation for unceasingly seeking to do what's right for children of Pasadena ISD. They spend countless hours attending events, meetings, going through board packets, supporting our students and faculty, studying policy, reviewing various proposals and authorizing budgets, while continuously looking for ways to improve our district, and of course, support me and every Pasadena ISD stakeholder, so thank you. They get paid no monetary compensation. That means their salary is $0.00 and they're still smiling up here. They are just devoted and hardworking, and the reward they get is the satisfaction. And they shared that with me countless times about our students and our staff, and how proud they are of our student and our staff and this community that they serve. So join me in watching a short video that highlights some of the things that our students and our staff have to say across the district. Take it away.
Is that what they think of us?
Now, Dr. Powell, we must be having some technical issues.
What?
And you know, in Pasadena, our school board is great. The ISD is great. In every case.
With hearts so true. They lead the way.
The ISD's board, we thank you today.
Oh, we love our school board so strong.
Our ups and downs, you're by our side.
Grateful hearts with passion and pride.
Do you need any proof? Just pick the evidence. For educators' sake, we tirelessly strive.
Our board, you, fine.
Our board deserve you, deserve you.
Our appreciation, we proclaim. Thank you, school board. Today is your day. We don't lose any staff to any acting contracts anytime soon.
Well, maybe one.
But they put that together, and I'm very proud. We made one young man cry up here, but no, it's all good. We're sorry. We're actually the ones that are sorry. So we actually do have a video, so take it away.
To our high school board members, you do so much for our campus and district.
Sending a big thank you from your South Belts years.
JFAS school board appreciates you.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month from the Castle Elementary.
Thank you for your honor, thurium, and something.
Yay!
From the Castle Elementary, faculty, students, and staff, we thank you for your commitment and dedication, not only to our campus but the entire district. We love you.
Thank you.
From our high school students and staff, a huge thank you for your commitment and dedication and love for PISD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to our school board members.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Here at our board, here in our time.
Today at Ellis Smith Elementary, we're excited to celebrate and express our gratitude to our amazing Pasadena school board members.
This month, we want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you for your commitment, hard work, and positive impact you bring to our school.
Ellis Smith Elementary sends a huge thank you to our school board members at PISD. Your dedication makes our school an incredible place to learn and grow.
Thanks for making our school awesome.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month. We love our PISD school board.
This is Jennifer Salsada, proud principal at Malolo Middle School. I just want to thank the school board for all of your support for our students, for our staff, and for our community. We appreciate you.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
So thank you, school board members, for your unwavering support, your dedication to our students and our staff, for supporting innovative programs and opportunities across the board for pre-K through 12th grade. I think the video showed you the appreciation that is from one corner of the district to the other for each of you. But again, we hope you feel special tonight and every day for serving PISD. Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
This district makes it incredibly easy for the seven of us to stand up here and do what we do, and we thank y'all for that. And the other thing I want to say is, Jorley, we noticed you were the only one that didn't stand up. So we'll talk about that, we'll talk about it later.
Well, board members, we still have some further recognitions tonight. We have a persons here from Adrian Garcia's office. We have our friend Raul Camarillo and Susan Castillo that want to present to you in honor of school board recognition, so please come forward. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Powell, Board of Trustees, I am Raul Camerillo Jr., and I am the community liaison for the Pasadena area for Harris County Precinct 2 Commissioner Adrian Garcia's office. Pasadena ISD is very large, and so tonight, my colleague Susanna Castillo is here because she has the Houston and city of South Houston region, and so since Pasadena is in all those areas, she has a message from Commissioner Adrian Garcia to share with you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. And on behalf of Commissioner Adrian Garcia, who celebrates the outstanding Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees during School Board Recognition Month, strong school boards are essential to highly effective education systems. Each of you, as local school board members, perform critical work. You embody the spirit of 2204's theme, locally elected and community connected. Your collaboration with educational professionals, parents, and other community members to create the educational vision for our students, which has led to Pasadena ISD's great success. Commissioner Adrian Garcia is proud to have had collaborated with you in the past and is looking forward to continuing our partnership in the future. For all of these reasons, Commissioner Adrian Garcia urges all of its citizens to join him in recognizing your dedication and hard work to meet the needs of today's children and tomorrow's. Commissioner Garcia honors each of you with this Harris County Precinct 2 certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent appreciation. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. That's right, team of eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for being here. Very nice. Well, thank you very much, and we're going to move on and ask Mr. Jorley Thomas, Principal of J. Frank Dobie, to stand and come forward. You got it, this time, stand, okay? And he has an amazing coach, Rowena Hickman, girls PE teacher. Poor thing had to teach us pickleball. Is she here?
She's here. She's going to be doing, I'm just going to introduce her.
Oh, come on down. Yes, take it away, Mr. Thomas.
I'm excited that we are highlighting the achievements of a cross-country runner who competed at the state level. Her coach, Mo Hickman, has been chosen to do the honors. As Coach Hickman makes her way to the microphone, it is my privilege to recognize her not only as a coach, but also as a mentor, motivator, and champion of success. Her influence extends far beyond the field, and we are lucky to have her at Dobie High School. Coach Hickman.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Dr. Powell, Dr. Harrell, and Board of Trustees. It's completely my honor to be here tonight. It is our honor to shine a light on an extraordinary achievement by one of J. Frank Dobie's best, a student who has proven that perseverance, determination, and relentless spirit can lead to remarkable success. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you J. Frank Dobie's record holder today, Lauren Garza, our first state qualifier in the female 5K race. This student has shown that running takes endurance and mental strength. From the rugged trails of braving the elements, Lauren trained tirelessly, day after day, week after week, always pushing her limits, always striving for better. Qualifying for the state level is no ordinary feat. It requires not just physical skill, but also mental toughness, resilience, and a deep-seated passion for the sport. Lauren has demonstrated all of these qualities and more. Her performance at the district in regional levels was nothing short of awe-inspiring, setting new records with a PR of 1901, and outpacing her competitors with grace and grit. She is a three-year letter winner, a three-year regional qualifier, and a top-10 medalist in each and every race she ran this year. Our student is not only a trailblazer on the cross-country trail, but she is a standout in the sports community. She has received numerous awards and recognition that signify her commitment and dedication to the sport, which tells the story of the individual who not only finishes first, but also exhibits resilience, sportsmanship, and leadership throughout the season. She has maintained an excellent grade point average while balancing the demands of rigorous athletic training. Off the track, Lauren is an early college student who excels in both the classroom and in her sport, and also has been recognized for her academic achievements. She has earned Academic All-District in 2021, 2022, and 2023. She has made the Dean's List this past semester with a GPA of 4.7. These accolades are more than a personal victory. Sorry. She knows me very well. She knows I'm not done. These accolades are more than a personal victory of trophies and titles, but a collective one. They reflect Lauren's unwavering commitment to excellence, her resilience in facing challenges, and her passion for cross-country running. Luckily for us, Lauren is a junior, and we are confident that she will continue to make us proud with her remarkable performances. Lauren, thank you for being a beacon of inspiration for the entire Dobie community, a testament of power of determination, and a symbol of what we can achieve when we dare to dream big. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd also like to introduce to you tonight her parents, Mr. and Mrs. David Garza, her sister, who was a state qualifier, Olivia, and by all means, her traveling entourage, her family supporters, her aunts and uncles. Thank you very much. We are here tonight.
Well, we have another amazing accomplishment by Dobie member. We want to bring forward Mr. Thomas again to introduce this amazing educator.
We're thrilled to showcase an exceptional individual who has made great strides in the field of science education at Dobie High School. She has been recognized for her outstanding work as a secondary science teacher, receiving awards such as the Outstanding Secondary Science Teacher by CAST, and the Wilma Robertson's Excellence in Science Teaching Award from the Houston Museum of Natural Science. Dr. V., as we know her at Dobie, specializes in teaching chemistry to early college students and actively participates in conferences like the Advancement of Science Teaching. She is dedicated to staying up to date with innovative teaching methods and brings science to life in the classroom. In addition to her exceptional teaching abilities, Dr. V. also mentors instructional coaches and contributes to the professional development of her peers. She is deeply committed to the community involvement and has successfully increased Advanced Placement AP enrollment, creating a new opportunity for student achievement. Tonight, we celebrate Dr. Saleen Verhustafat's remarkable achievements in science education and honor her for the Outstanding Science Teacher of the Year award by CAST. Let us recognize her creativity, dedication, and unwavering commitment to professional growth. Dr. V.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you, Dr. V. It was amazing to witness her getting that award at our CAST convention in downtown Houston. I was honored to be there as part of the team, so congratulations. And PR team, let's make sure we get a good picture because we'll scroll it on our wall of honor. So thank you, thank you. And we also have one more recognition, and that is Judith Martinez from the Girl Scouts of America. Please come forward. Okay. Oh, look at her, all right.
Not just one.
Yeah. How cute.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us today, tonight here. We're coming from Girl Scout, San Jacinto Council. This troop that are here with us today is a troop from Pasadena ISD. They meet at the library, Pasadena Central Library, and we have this little girl who is representing the troop 136351, and want to share some message for the board of trustees.
Hello, Pasadena ISD Board. My name is Scarlett, and I am a second-year Brownie with troop 136351 from Jensen Elementary. Being a Girl Scout is some, being a Girl Scout is one of the things I am most proud of, and it has allowed me to have so many cool new experiences. of, and it has allowed me to have so many cool new experiences, help my community, and make some awesome new friends along the way. On behalf of all the Girl Scouts in Pasadena ISD, I would, I would like to thank you for making Pasadena a place where girls can challenge themselves, be confident in who they are, and make our community and the world a better place through Girl Scouts. We brought you each some Girl Scout cookies as a sweet little token of our appreciation for all of your support for Girl Scouts. Thank you.
That's why we do what we do.
And not the Girl Scout cookies.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Board President and Board members, that is all of our special recognition tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion passed. Consideration possible approval of administrative personnel. So moved. Okay. Did you go get it? Oh, she got it. Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez.
Addenda items A30.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
So I would like to welcome our newest or promotions here. So Leila Bramberg, are you here today?
Stand up.
Stacy, I'm being embarrassed you now. So Ms. Bramberg has been approved for the position of Safe School Liaison for the Curriculum and Instruction Department for the remainder of 2023-2024 school year. Congratulations and welcome to Pasadena ISD.
Thank you.
Does here with you today?
Wonderful.
Awesome. Congratulations.
And Ms. Ruth Tenorio?
There she is.
What a banknote. Ms. Ruth Tenorio has been approved for the position of Instructional Specialist Mathematics for the remainder of the school year. Congratulations. I see you have family and friends here. Yes. Mr. Richard Michael Holt. For the position of Director of Fine Arts for the remainder of the school year. Congratulations. Do you have family and friends here?
I do. My wife.
Extremely grateful for what you do. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
I think you have someone upstairs that's looking down on every last bit of this, and she gives her approval too.
Amen.
Ms. Stacy Barber.
There they are.
Been approved for the position of Executive Director of Professional Development. Congratulations. Please introduce family and friends.
Definitely been in an emotional board meeting. Consideration possible approval of the amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Consideration possible approval of employee reclassification for the 2023, hang on a second, those of you that would like to leave, you can go. We'll give you a minute or two because you could stick around if you wanted to, but the fun stuff is pretty much over. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
That'll leave the room in a hurry, won't it?
That little police officer in the back. I know him. That police officer in the back.
But don't forget to leave the Girl Scout cookies. Can he get the Girl Scout cookies? You keep an eye on him. There they go.
Let me see.
Oh, okay, perfect. Because there's a cop back there.
I'm so sorry. You know what? Don't worry. Hey. First, they're in the back. Oh, they weren't getting out here. I wasn't sure if I was going to do this or not. I'm so sorry. I don't, I didn't. Pushed me over the edge, so thank you. Oh, you're fine. Twenty-four years, it makes sense. I would worry if you didn't get emotional. Good job.
Congratulations, Stacy. You're going to do a great job.
Fair as well deserved.
Okay, as they move out of the boardroom, we'll go ahead and continue. Consideration possible approval of employee reclassification for the 2023-2024 school year. So moved by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davala. Is there any discussion?
This is a savings, as you can see, as we've been looking at, as we build the 24-25 budget. It does allow us, though, to have some extra additional assistance with our purchasing and, of course, implementation of various technology needs. It's something other districts have in place, and we felt the need for it with as much technology as you've approved and the bond has approved, so we're excited about this opportunity. But again, it is for savings overall.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Cooperative Agreement with Odessa College and Passy ISD for Clinical Teaching Placement. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davala. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Certified Personnel for the 2023-2024 school year is for information only, as well as Support Personnel for the 2023-2024 school year for information only. We're going to move on to the educational section. Consideration possible approval of the application for the, for a TEA Low Attendance Waiver for San Jacinto Intermediate.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez, or Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
This was, unfortunately, a terroristic internet threat that caused this, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2023 Community Project Funding congressionally-directed Spending Department of Labor Grant Award in the amount of $2,200,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Well, we're excited about this opportunity. It's going to allow for some mobile labs to move around our district and help in our efforts to increase STEM opportunities for students at various grade levels, so we're appreciative of this opportunity through Sylvia Garcia's office and the Department of Labor Grant.
Fantastic. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Olivia and your staff. I know there are three items on here of grants that you've received and applied for. Great job. Your department does a wonderful job for Pasadena.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2023-2024 Harris County Department of Education HCDE Case for Kids Partnership Grant Award for Frazier Elementary in the amount of $30,000 and the corresponding inter-local agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the U.S. Soccer Foundation Grant Award in the amount of $100,000 and the corresponding agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davala. Any discussion?
Oh, in the world did we get a grant to this size from the soccer association.
So it's really cool. Ms. Stewart, do you want to come forward and talk about it? It's going to be a great opportunity. We have not only Ms. Stewart from Jackson Intermediate, but we also have Wendy Wispert was here for the previous grant, so we appreciate our principals coming out after they're tired all day, but if you want to say a few words, this is a cool opportunity.
Thank you for having us here. We do appreciate it. We, this is an exciting opportunity for our campus. I've brought with me Christopher Gonzalez. He's one of our coaches, and he is also an expert grant writer. He, he actually has a history of acquiring grants for Jackson for many, many years, substantial grants. This happens to be the biggest one, and we're really excited for the opportunity to be able to not only partner with the U.S. Soccer Foundation in their, in their kind of quest to bring more access to communities for the, you know, the game of the soccer, but also in active play. So they have a fabulous website that you can go to and read all about the mini pitch. But Chris, you want to tell us a little bit about how you went about getting the grant?
Yeah, I was looking for ways to register for the, to buy tickets for the 2026 World Cup.
Stumbled upon it.
Yeah, and there was a section that had grants for a mini pitch, which is a small soccer field, and I applied, and here we are.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Wow. Thank you. Guys, for your consideration. We really appreciate the opportunity to bring this to our community. Another thing is, we are going to be partnering, I've reached out to the athletics, I keep saying athletics, not athletics, the PE department, and they actually have a grant that coincides with this that's going to allow them to bring some educational opportunities for our PE teachers, our health and PE teachers, and for our, our students to actually be trained by members of this organization. So it's like, we didn't know. We didn't coordinate it. It just happened, so we're excited about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
The last few years, soccer has become such a big part of students and children, but also parents follow them everywhere. So we're very grateful for this, and I know that our district will use it to the best interest of our students. Thank you very much.
Good job, Coach.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and ratification of an inter-local agreement between the Harris County Department of Education and Passy Independent School District for tuition and education services at the Academic and Behavioral School West Campus.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of professional services contract with True North Consulting Group for the 2022 Safety and Security Bond Project in the amount of $103,600.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Take these grants to continue.
Yes, ma'am. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2023-2024 Budget for the Region Four Regional Day School Program for the death in the amount of $1,476,282 to be paid with local funds. So moved. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a state-approved innovative course, practicum in entrepreneurship, for 2024-2025 school year to be offered at all Passy ISD high schools.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davala. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of career and technical education students to participate in the national competitions.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for Thompson Intermediate to travel to Keystone, Colorado to attend the...
Did you miss number nine?
Number nine? We did.
We did, yeah.
I could do it again. Consideration and possible approval of career and technical education students to participate in the national competition. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for Thompson Intermediate to travel to Keystone, Colorado to attend the Keystone Science School October 5 through 11, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second...
I have a question, Dr. Powell.
Yes.
In years past, we've had large numbers of students go to Keystone, being large the neighborhood of 20 to 30 students, and this is a very, very wonderful program. However, this last year, I think we only have eight students to participate. Is there something that we can do to create a strong interest in this program or set some type of fundraisers so that more students might be able to participate in this?
I believe there are opportunities. I don't know if y'all want to come forward or not, but talk about this. We're hoping to get 32 students with five chaperones and one administrator, and maybe talk about those opportunities. Thank you. Bringing our awesome science teacher up here as well, so that we can build back to those numbers.
Yes, ma'am. We already have 22 who have already signed up. We are very excited to grow this program again. It seems like after COVID, the interest kind of slept, you know, was a little lower, and parents were not as excited to get back on planes, but we are ramping back up with our science programs. This is Ms. McMullin. She is our Science Department Head, and we are very excited. So we are doing fundraising as well for these students who are already signed up, and we are getting interest every day with more students wanting to attend.
Thank you so very much. It is such a wonderful program, and it's so beneficial to our students. Thank you for leading this charge.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Ms. Sullivan, you seconded that motion. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of J. Frank Dobie High School debate team to travel to Berkeley, California for... from February 17th through the 19th, 2024, as well as the Berkeley Forum hosted at Emory University from January 26th through the 29th, 2024, for National Circuit Speech and Debate Competitions.
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the, is student achievements for information only. We're going to move to the financial section.
We're going to win some awards, Coach Flores? Okay. That's right. Okay, very good. Lots of student recognition or achievement.
Yes, ma'am. Consideration possible approval of budget amendment, amendments for November 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for December of 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the annual comprehensive financial report for 2022-2023 school year, presented by Mr. Patrick Simmons Audit Partner, Whitney Penn.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan.
We have a presentation.
Yes, sir. Take it away.
Good evening. Uh, we should have a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, other podium, sorry. We're getting used to our new technology. There we go.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Patrick Simmons. I'm with Whitney Penn, the auditing firm, uh, that audited your fiscal year 2023 financial statements. And so you should have a copy of this PowerPoint along with the final draft of the annual comprehensive financial report. And so I will go ahead and walk you through the results of the, the audit. So first of all, a quick introduction to our team. So I was the audit partner, and then we also had Gustavo Guzman, Dan Hernandez, who were, uh, in the field and led the field work. And then Selena is a resource partner. She's our industry leader. And then we also have Tom Peterson, who's the concurring partner, who has over 40 years of experience in the industry, and he's a second set of eyes to look at everything before it goes out. And so, um, quick recap on the process. So we come out in the summertime, and we meet with all your departments, and we, uh, do what we call walkthroughs. We gain an understanding of your internal controls, and we, uh, perform tests of those internal controls. And then we determine if they're operating as you planned them to, or if there's any gaps or anything. Uh, we make recommendations at that point. Um, then we come back, stop number three, and do our substantive testing after you've closed the books. Um, so a couple of months ago, we came back out, and then we substantiate the balances that you give to us. So, uh, for example, cash, we would confirm directly with the bank and, uh, make sure that it, it's accurate. And then any reconciling items between the cash and your books, we verify those are accurate. That's just one example. Um, but, uh, we do a lot of testing, and all that goes into providing an opinion on the financial statements, of which there are three different types of opinions we can provide. And I will jump right into the results for Pasadena ISD. So you are receiving an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give on a set of financial statements. It's a clean opinion. Um, and what it means is that, uh, it's reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and can be relied upon. And then we also issue a report over internal controls, and we noted there were no deficiencies or material weaknesses, no findings to report on noncompliance for that as well. And then the third report that we issue is related to your federal single audit. So, um, since you spend well over $750,000 in federal awards each year, you're required to have a single audit. And then we rotate the programs that are selected as major programs each year. And this year, you had ESER, Title II, and the special, uh, special education cluster were selected. And so no findings to report on those major programs and an unmodified opinion on each major program. And then, uh, a quick recap on just high-level financial statements. So you'll see here, this is your statement of net position, just a summary view. And this is going to be your accrual basis accounting, so it includes your capital assets, your long-term debt. And, um, your net investment capital assets number is an important number to look at, $324 million. So increase of $47 million from the previous year. That shows how you're investing in the buildings and the, and the capital assets of the district as the bond, uh, projects proceed. And then, um, your unrestricted net position you'll see is a negative number, but that is due to reporting your share of your pension liability and post-employment benefit liability with TRS and TRS care for the retirees. And so it's common here to show a, a, a negative number. So that's what's driving that to flip upside down. So that's not an outlier across the state. It's, uh, fairly common. The general fund, uh, revenue sources, this is just a snapshot of where the money came from during the fiscal year. And so in your general fund, it was funded 52% by state aid and then 34% by property taxes. And then the other state funding was your, uh, TRS on behalf revenue, and then federal funding, your indirect costs related to your grant programs of 5%. And then the remaining was below your 5% there. And then your expenditure is where the money went. So 58% was spent on instruction and instruction-related services. So we typically see that around, uh, between 55 to 60%. And so you're right in there with what we see across the state. Um, next in line is your facilities, maintenance, and operations of 12%, and that's going to include your, um, insurance and your utilities. So that's always a, a big chunk there. And then next is instructional and school leadership at 9%. And then, um, I have a breakout of the other categories to the right, but the, the remaining most significant categories would be your student support, student transportation, security, and administration. Then your budget to actual, the general fund, so where did it end up at the end of the year? So your net change in fund balance, which is the third column there and under actual, so you, the change in fund balance was a positive, it was an increase of 3.1 million um, to an ending fund balance of 181.3 million. And then this is just a snapshot. So the, the district's result is the middle column there, and then the left is your minimum fund balance policy, and then the right is 120 days in fund balance, just as a, a metric there. And so you're at 148.8 of unassigned fund balance, and that's, uh, equivalent to 99 days of general fund expenditures. And, and, uh, the previous year, you were at 104 days in general fund expenditure. So it's just a slight decrease, but you're well above your minimum, uh, district policy of the 12.5%.
What is that, 120 days?
That's just, uh, the upper side of the metric. So TA usually lays out, uh, 30, 60, and 90 days as benchmarks, and then 120 days is just a even more positive benchmark. So that's just to see where you fall within the, the range there. The actual result is the middle column. Did I explain that? It was okay. Yes, the, well, the 99 days is the, the 27.2% or the 148.8 million. I know the, the bar chart is a little confusing. I'm sorry. And then your, uh, child nutrition fund and your debt service fund, this is just a recap of the activity here. So in your child nutrition fund, you experience an increase of 2.3 million. And as, as you know, you're capped at how much fund balance you can have in this fund. So you all have a spending plan to draw that down. So you're limited to three months of, three months of expenditures and fund balance here. And so, um, very common to see this across the state right now with the way child nutrition is funded. And so, um, you have a plan in place to spend that. And then your debt service fund had an increase of 2.7 million and then an ending fund balance of 37.3 million to make that debt payment after year-end. And then, uh, just some required communications, uh, to conclude. So the district did implement a new standard this year, the subscription-based information and technology arrangements, GASB 96. So if you have, uh, it's basically software as a service. If it's a multi-year agreement that you enter into, um, you would capitalize it like a intangible capital asset, but you would also have a, a long-term liability if it's, uh, paid over multiple years. And so, um, it was a very significant undertaking by the, uh, finance department to implement this. And, um, it, it resulted in changes in your, mainly your government-wide financial statements, where you report your capital assets. But now you may also have debt service in your general fund, where you may not have had that before. So you'll see that reflected in these financial statements. Overall, the impact to the government-wide financial statements was a positive impact because you're able to capture some capital assets that maybe you paid for the five-year software agreement in advance. So you would capitalize it all upfront and then depreciate it over five years or the life of the, the subscription term. And then there's also estimates that go into these financial statements. So we evaluate those each year and make sure that they're consistent with how they were, um, applied in previous years and in accordance with industry standards, and we didn't note any issues there. And then, uh, happy to report, no issues, uh, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit and working with management. And then, uh, there were certain misstatements that we, uh, discovered as we were working through these, but that's not uncommon. And so the management agreed with all of our proposed entries, and so those are all reflected in the financial statements as well. And then we had no disagreements with management over the application of accounting principles. And lastly, I'd just like to thank, uh, the finance department and their team. Um, a lot of work really goes into, uh, preparing these and, and going through this all throughout the year. So thank you for everything y'all do, and thank you to the entire district. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Glad to hear such a good report. Makes us feel good.
It's a good report.
Congratulations being in your department.
Yeah, well done. Any other questions for Mr. Simmons? Any other questions, Board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Consideration possible adoption of a board resolution declaring an emergency and authorizing employee compensation and purchases due to inclement weather on January 15th through the 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Sullivan? Second by Ms. Davila, sorry. Any discussion? We're not passing ISD unless we have a freeze or something.
Well, I was going to say, uh, hopefully the last one, but I know just to be quiet and sit here quietly.
Any other discussion?
This is just a necessary item.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Operations section. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with Trumble Construction, Inc. for the 2022 Bond Program Roof Replacement Package II project in the amount of $4,521,372.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I'd like to hear the, a response regarding the gentleman's discussion before the comments.
We, uh, have used Trumble, uh, previous packages, roof packages, and had a good experience. But you want to talk a little bit about the bid process?
Yeah, we work directly with the purchasing department, and I appreciate the gentleman coming forward because it kind of highlights the importance of why we do the CSP. And that it's not based on just a little bid, but we have also other grading criteria for reputation, uh, proposers, the, the team that they submit, the time that they submit. So, uh, those are all factors that we look at as, in, in including, um, base price. So, um, yeah, it's, uh, we've used Trumble. Uh, they did two, 2017 bond projects, Package One and a Package Two roofing projects that were pretty significant. They completed those in 2019. We had a great experience with them. So, um, we're excited to move on to another project with them.
I love it. But thank you for listing the schools that are going to be affected. I think that's real important. We can kind of keep it in our mind when we're going through different phases of it. So thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the schematic design phase of the softball complex replacement project. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any, any discussion?
Creator here. So we have a presentation.
I love it.
Thank you, sir. You should have a booklet. Okay, thank you.
Almost all the fun stuff.
It's going to be a rough night, anyway.
The Girl Scouts brought cookies. What you got?
We should have a little warning. All we got is the pictures we're going to show. We'll try and do better next time, if you don't mind. But anyway, I'm Roger Brown Low, and Jerry Bevel and I are here tonight to present the schematic design of the proposed softball complex. Uh, we want to thank the Board, Dr. Powell, uh, Facilities, and also the Athletic Director and Assistant Athletic Director for their support and, uh, really passionate experience working together on projects like this. So we were given a, a, let me get the... See how this technology works, yeah. We were given a site. I think it's probably familiar to everyone in this room. It's the former, uh, administration building site. This is due to undergo the wrecking ball here in a couple of weeks, I believe. So we'll give it a fond, fond memory and maybe build something a little bit more fun on this, on this, on this site. We were, looked to evaluate the program and see if this site was sufficient to accommodate the, the building program for the softball complex. So we did. We looked at that. Came up with this concept to include, uh, well, three softball fields, one on being proposed. We have the main softball field in the center that will receive, uh, artificial turf. The, uh, what we call Play Field Number Two will have natural turf. And then the proposed, uh, softball field number three, which will be on the east, uh, west side of the site on Strawberry Road, uh, will also have natural grass turf. So we were given a requirement of, of parking for 400 cars. Also, we have a requirement for a, uh, bus drive, uh, to accommodate six buses. They'll transport the teams back and forth to their, uh, school of origin. So as you see on this plan right here, the, the main entry into the complex is denoted by that red arrow. You come into the, into the complex, it'll be through the ticket window gated access. You come onto a central, uh, plaza courtyard that kind of, everything is clustered around that. We'll go to the next, uh, drawing. Gives you a little bit more detail on how, what some of the, uh, requirements are and what we've included in the, in the, uh, there again, you see the red arrow where the entry is. You come into the, into the plaza, paved plaza area, uh, flanked on, on either side by the restrooms. Have been split up from side to side to minimize some of the congestion that occurs during, at the restrooms. We also have the concession. And then on the, on the far, um, right-hand side, you'll have the, we have a facility for the officials to come, a dressing room, restroom, things of that nature. Uh, there'll be a custodial room in that building as well as a store, Jerry. Uh, looking at the plaza, you'll see the, uh, the, uh, right in front on the, uh, front of the bleachers, there's a, it'll be the press box that'll be elevated above the top of the bleachers, looking down on Play Field Number One. The footprint at the ground level will be vehicle, uh, grounds, maintenance, equipment, storage. There'll be seating for 500 on Play Fields, uh, two and three. There'll be seating for 1,000 on the, on the main play field, number one. Each of the, uh, play fields will have a dugout for the teams. It'll be a step-down type dugout. Uh, there'll be safety netting to protect the, uh, spectators in the, in the bleachers from fly balls and things of that nature. Um, there, like I say, there'll be the, um, press box at, at the elevator above the top of the, uh, bleachers, number one. The green area, the green circles you see there, that's, they'll probably be landscape areas and things of that nature. So that's kind of the overall layout and what the program requirements are, and we think it fits quite well on that site. And that site is going to be very, very conducive to this, uh, to this. One thing I do want to point out that's not noted on here, we will require stormwater detention on this site, as we always do, to offset some of the not having available space for a normal detention pond. That'll be under the, under the parking area. So this will give you a little, uh, better perspective, an aerial view, looking at the, at the site. This is looking from the southeast corner as you, as you, if you're overhead, looking down at the parking area. You see the main, uh, entry weighed by the, um, ticket booth. You see the main entrywayed by the ticket booth, through the access gates, so you see the three, the relationship of the three playing fields. And this will be an aerial view, if you're on the north side of the site, looking down on it, you see play field number one, play field number two, and then number, proposed play field number three on, on the west side. You see how the, the stadium bleachers work, how they're configured, you'll notice there's wheelchair ramps going to all of the seating, so we'll have accessible, accessible seating each of the stadiums. And the foreground, you see also then the, the bus lane accommodating six buses for the team buses going back and forth, transporting the teams back and forth to the...
Buses in there, your bus number three, all done, what happened?
Oh, how do we get around? Well, we might have to make that a little wider, or maybe they can put another number on the bus. We don't want them locked in there to spend the night, I understand. So we're working with a budget of seventeen million, seven hundred and seven thousand, and we'll take every effort to stay within that budget. That does include the proposed third play field. Schedule, right now, our schematic design will be going through the design development, construction documents, the procurement phase, in which the project we put out for bids, selecting a contractor, awarding a contract that is scheduled for this August of this year. We've allocated about a year for construction, and, which will bring us up to August of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five. That'll give us a couple of months cushion there before the softball season starts in January twenty twenty-six. Well, that is kind of the schematic design presentation tonight, and we'll be glad to address them.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, Roger.
Good, Mr. Chairman.
How much difficulty you have putting ten pounds of flour in a five-pound sack?
Well, that's why we're going underground, to see.
You squeezed it, didn't you?
But we, 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 there's a requirement for, I think, Roberto asked for a infield, I mean outfield fence of two hundred and ten feet, we've accomplished that on each, on each of the, of the three fields, so we satisfied that requirement, so we're getting it in there.
This being so close to the neighborhood.
Good point. No, they won't. They will have the, they will have the shielding on there, the, none of the light should spill over into adjacent...
Light up so much, but that's it.
That's right, but I, I think it's actually a code requirement now, so it's, it's a, will be required to comply with that.
Any other discussion? Question?
We'll provide some security for the neighborhoods, too.
Yeah.
Yes, that's true.
So this is leaving the two businesses that are on Strawberry Road intact as they are.
That's what Sean, that's why one of the fields is proposed, so that the district can have the opportunity to see what, if there's an opportunity to acquire those properties or, or be able to expand into them.
We're gonna have a discussion in a few minutes about that, in close session.
So that proposed third field is pending, what happens with those corner businesses?
Well, you'll see those, those corner properties, if this field is not built or the district decides not to, then we'll have two fields, and then those properties will still...
Any other discussion? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That was a fun...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration possible approval of commercial lease addendum for extension of term, for extension of term at the auxiliary transportation site.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion?
Who do we rent that from there?
That's from Emmons Auto Group.
The Auto Group.
Yes. It's been a long-term partnership and collaborative effort to rent that property.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of material testing services agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Inc., for the twenty seventeen bond new transportation facility and site work project in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowances expenditure authorization, AEA number one four zero R, for new administration building replacement project in the amount of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number one four five, for the new administration building replacement project in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number zero zero five for the new administration building replacement project in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number zero two two, for the guidance center conversion to nutrition services project in the credit amount of five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? We will take the money. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number zero zero one for the guidance center conversion to nutrition services project in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Pay the money.
And, and that goes back. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
They have moved board members over into that new facility, so we'll make sure y'all get an opportunity to see that. This will help with their deliveries and the amount of trucks that go in and out for food products to their establishment.
Any other discussion? Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number zero three one, for the guidance center conversion to nutrition services project in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next area is construction updates, it's for information only, we're gonna move to the miscellaneous section. Public comments according to the BED local related to topics not listed on the agenda, thirty-minute allotment. We have two speakers tonight, Mr. Edward Valdez and Ms. Yan Rabe. This portion of the public comments is limited to speakers who are addressing items not listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language, complaints about an individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pascaya ISD board policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and, in so doing, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead, this admonishment goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Fernandez, you have the time? We'll keep the time and indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. Mr. Valdez? These are proximity microphones, so you have to get three to six inches to it for them to pick up, so.
Three inches, right?
Yep, three to six.
Yes, 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 okay. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Eric Valdez, and I'm a former student and former judge of the secret of Pasca High School, and I'm here to speak against the war in Ukraine and, and the Gaza Strip. And everyone, let's have a one-minute of silence for the people who died during the war in Ukraine and the Gaza Strip. Let's have a bow down. Thank you, thank you. And I would say, okay, we are proud of our, one of our PHS graduates who has served bravely, or bravely in the military, to our military, to act, and let's hope not, let's hope it's not happen in World War III for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Next up is Ms. Yan Rabe, she'll be speaking on safety issues, seven fifteen AM start time.
Good evening, my name is Yan Rabe, I'm a taxpayer of P, Pasca ISD, the largest chunk of my taxes go to Pasca ISD, and I am also an educator, and I'm also hungry right now. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, when we're hungry, a lot of us go to eat at fast food places like Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, and Wingstop, but I like to go to Broadway Wings down in South Shaver, South, Southmore. And the reason why I'm saying this is because you've probably noticed when you go to these establishments, that many of the workers there are students, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old students, and they're working late, as late as eleven, twelve, up to two in the morning. And this is, I wanted to bring your awareness of an article that was recently published in the Washington Post highlighting the la, the child labor crisis in the United States, where fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, there is a law to protect fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, they cannot work more than three hours a day and not past seven PM. And there's lots of violations, though, that these franchises of fast food restaurants are violating this law. And then on top of that, there is no law for workers, for student workers sixteen years and older. They can be kept up, kept to work for as long as, like I said, two AM, and that is dangerous for our students, because then they have to wake up and go to school, be at school by seven fifteen. That's not safe for our students. We can't change the law for labors, but the school board can please, can you please consider changing the start time so that these are students who work to help support their families and maybe for pocket money, too, and they don't want to stay that long, but they're asked to stay that long. So if you can please consider it, and I was gonna, I would like to email this letter to our board members, this article, but I know that you guys, board members, do not have direct access to your emails, and I think that is not right either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabe. Board, we need to adjourn to executive session for an item, so we need to go in there, and then we'll come back out. Y'all can leave if you want to. After we're done, we're just gonna come back and close. We thank each and every one of you for being here. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Set the date for the next regular meeting, suggested Tuesday, February the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. February the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. It's... Now, you were saying about closed session, Mr. President. And now we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four for the purpose of considering matters related to the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. I believe that's seven-two. Five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Good to go? The board's gonna reconvene in open session at eight fifty-four PM, so we can close the board at eight fifty-four PM. And motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Immediate adjourn.